Have you started recording, Janet?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, good morning and welcome to today's planning commission meeting for November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. At this time, I would like for you guys to join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the bespoke of liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Janet, could you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Here.
Commissioner Serrano Quan?
Here.
Chair Ramirez?
Here.
Commissioner Gupta is absent. Staffed representative by Monowitz, Fox, and Montes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have oral communications. This is for, to allow members of the public to address the 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 planning commission on any matters that are not on the agenda. Janet will explain how you can participate on the meeting. So Janet, could you please do that?
Yes, Chair. For those attending the meeting on the Zoom video conference, we will use the raised hand feature in order to organize any public comments. During the general public comment period and for each item on the regular agenda, I will ask those members of the public who wish to comment to click the raised hand feature to raise your hand to speak on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. Please note that members of the public must wait for my prompt in connection with each agenda item before using the raised hand function. For example, you cannot raise your hand at the beginning of the meeting for an agenda item that is later in the meeting. When you hear your name called, I will prompt you to unmute your account and inform you that you may be dismissed. You will have five minutes. I have also, I don't see any hands raised at the moment, but I have not received any correspondence today.
All right, seeing that there are no members of the public that want to participate in oral communication, I will close this item this time unless there's an objection. Next, we have consent agenda. We have three items. Do any of the commissioners want to pull any of these items off of the consent agenda? If not, is, can we, can I contemplate a motion?
I say we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Janet, could you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Aye.
Commissioners Serrano Quan?
Aye.
Chair Ramirez?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes four to one.
Yes, a motion carries unanimously. So next, we can move on to our regular agenda, which is item number four. Janet, could you read that for the record?
Yes. Item number four. Owner, applicant Maria Peterson, file number PLN two zero two two dash zero zero two two six. Location off of La Honda, southwest of La Honda Creek Open Space Preserve in La Honda. And our planner this morning is Canoa Kelly.
All right. Good morning, planning commissioners. And let me just pull up my slides for you. Is that ready? So as Janet mentioned, this first item, item number four, is off of La Honda Road. There's a parcel there that has two above ground or two idle oil wells with storage tanks and other oil production equipment onsite. And the applicant is is requesting a coastal development permit to remove these these two tanks. So here's the the APN number. It's currently undeveloped, so doesn't have an address, but has the APN number. You can see the approximate location. Here is a overhead view of the parcel. And here you can see the approximate locations of the two idle wells. There's Sangue Goya Road down here. There's the two oil wells where the arrows are. Here's some photos of the the two oil wells that have been abandoned. So the proposed project has been evaluated by staff and found to be in compliance with applicable general plan and local coastal program policies regard to sensitive habitat, visual quality, energy, and other policies. The applicant is required to submit plans to to minimize erosion related problems. And the, and there's also a demolition permit that is required from the building department. Upon removal of the oil wells, the site will be restored as near as possible to its original condition. And onsite tests would be performed to remove any contaminated soils. So staff has found that the the project location for the two wells are located in a scenic corridor, but due to the limited duration for the site cleanup, the proposed reseating and site restoration plan and existing vegetation along the main road there that the project would not be visible from the roadway. The project was also routed to the California Geological Energy Management Division. And it was found to meet all the requirements for abandonment of vital wells. They will also need a permit from CalGen to remove the the idle wells, and they are the lead agency on the project. For environmental review, the project is exempt from environmental review. Class one existing facilities that exempts the abandonment of oil, gas, and geothermal wells. So recommendations that the planning commission approve the coastal development permit by adopting the required findings and conditions of approval listed in attachment A for the removal of the, in the abandonment of the two oil wells. So the the agenda item was noticed as a, some test wells, some test water wells, but that has been removed from the scope of the project. So at this time, we are just focusing on the the removal of the idle oil wells. So the the project scope has been reduced, just for air information. So that concludes my presentation. Open up to any any questions, and the applicant is also here to answer questions for you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any questions from commissioners? Commission Ketchum?
Oh, no question. Thanks.
Commissioner Hanson?
No question.
Commissioner Serrano Quan?
None for me.
All right, yeah, none for me either. So let's hope it for the public, Janet.
We're now opening public comment for item number three. Give it a couple of seconds. I don't see any hands written reason yet. Actually, item number four correction. And there aren't any hands raised, Chair, at this time.
All right, thank you. Seeing that there are no members of the public that want to participate at this moment, we're gonna close. I'm gonna close public participation unless there's an objection. So, all right. Any deliberations from any or any additional comments from commissioners? Commission Ketchum?
Oh, no, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Hanson?
I'm certainly going to vote to approve it. Anything that removes oil wells permanently is desirable for, I think, for the county, so.
Commissioner Serrano Quan?
No further comments.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm gonna echo Mr. Hanson's comment. I think that anytime that we remove some of those old oil wells, it enhances the environment. So that's a good thing. All right, is there a motion for this item?
I'll do that. I move that we approve the coastal development permit, county file number PLN two zero two two dash zero zero two two six by adopting the required findings and conditions of approval listed in attachment A.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Janet, could you please do a roll call?
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Aye.
Commissioners Serrano Quan?
Aye.
Chair Ramirez?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
All right, the motion passes. The the project's approved unanimously. So we can move on now to our item number five. Janet, could you read that for the record?
Yes, Chair. Item number five, owner Bean Hollow Farm LLC, applicant Ryan Lee, file number PLN two zero two one dash zero 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 two two. Location located off of Bean Hollow Road in Pescadero, east of Cabillo Highway. And our planner this morning again is Canoa Kelly.
Let me share my other, pull up my other slides here. Okay, so item number five. So this is a consideration of quite a few different permits. The coastal development permit, as far as planned agricultural or PAD permit, architectural review, a grading permit, and the certification of the project's mitigated negative declaration. Let me just pull up the location. This is the APN number. You can see it's in the community of Pescadero of Cabrillo Highway. This is the, it's Bean Hollow Road is is over here. It's the closest kind of road. And then it's adjacent, you can see to to the highway here. So the use permit, arch review, CDP, the PAD, and the grading permit are to allow the construction of this three thousand six hundred fifty eight square foot, single-family residence. Will be a one thousand three hundred fifty eight square foot garage and a greenhouse. You can see there at the top or at the the right side of the screen for, you know, plantings and cultivating other vegetables and fruits. Here is the the site plan or the the cross section here, the floor plans. You can see the it's broken up into two levels. There's the top level, which is the main kind of dying kitchen space. And then there's that top terrace with the greenhouse. And then the lower level will house various bedrooms. And then these are the garage and workshop storage. So there's quite a lot of, you know, farm equipment and other things that would need to be stored onsite. The applicant is planning to continue the agricultural operations onsite. So so that workshop and that that storage for the farm equipment is is necessary. As you can see here, the project site contains both class two and three prime soils. There are no Williamson Act contracts for this, on this parcel though. And you can see the majority of the site is covered with the 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 farmland there. The parcel also contains riparian and marshland habitats. Majority of it is surrounding the storage ponds for water. So you can see here as part, and then this is in the pink, you can see the proposed residence. So again, the residence will be located outside of any prime soil locations. So there will be no conversion of prime soils for this project. There's just this slightly sloped area in the center here where the project and development will be located. As you can see here, we have, as part of the mitigation measures and recommendations from the biologist for the project, we have established a one hundred foot buffer from, you know, the wetlands and marshland areas and riparian areas. So the project will be located outside of that buffer and no development will occur in that in that area. The biologist has concluded that the there is that this habitat is is ripe for protected plant and animal species, and they have found red-legged frog onsite. They have been observed. So that hundred-foot buffer was important to to implement for this project to avoid any environmental impacts. The project's also located in a scenic corridor. And you can see here, because of the kind of slope of the parcel, the and existing vegetation, the project will not be viewed from from the highway. Or it will not not impact views from Bean Hollow Road and further and parcels further back from the from the project. Project compliance, so the the project meets all PAD development standards, as you can see in the in the slide here. The project is consistent with general plan LCP policies with regards to sensitive habitats, as we discussed, visual quality, land use, water and wastewater policies. So the project will have, it's a, it also involves a a domestic well that has already been drilled on the property. It will be evaluated by environmental health and to ensure that it's compliant for single-family residents. So that will provide water for the main dwelling unit. The the property owner also has water rights in the adjacent lake there, and they can pull water out of that and put it in their ponds onsite for agriculture. So they do have access to water for both the single-family use and agricultural operations. And so it also meets the architectural standards for rural scenic corridors. All the biological impacts have been reduced to less than significant levels with the required mitigation measures, which are in attachment A. And again, no prime soils will be converted with this project. And the grading will be the minimum necessary to accommodate development. And the project complies with all grading policies and all findings for a grading permit can be made. So and for environmental review, an initial study and mitigated and negative declaration was prepared for the project and circulated. No comments were received during the public comment period. And staff has determined that the project with the recommended mitigation measures will not have a significant impact on the environment. That concludes my presentation. I'll be here to answer any questions on the zoning, land use, and the, if you have some detailed questions, the applicant is also here to to answer those.
Thanks again, Mr. Kelly. Looks like you're doing a lot of work today. Next, all right, so commissioners, Mr. Mrs. Ketchum, do you have any questions?
I have a question on the water. Has there been any analysis or discussion of the change? So if the ag well is going to be converted to domestic, then, and they can draw from this lake, which is somewhere, presumably that that Lake Draw has not been occurring, so that would be more water being drawn from the lake, and how does this affect other users of that water or anything? Is there any information about that?
So, let's see. Well, we have Brian on on Brian Lee. Here he is. He can answer some questions for you about the water usage.
Thank you. Hi, commissioners. Thank you very much for this consideration. And I do want to thank the staff in terms of their diligence, in terms of seeing us through this process that we started in two thousand and twenty-one. The two ponds are agricultural ponds that were done many, many years ago. And they are basically ponds that supply, that come from Lake Lucerne. And they supply water to the farms that have been farmed continuously for a very long time. The ponds, as you see, are, you see, one of the ponds there, the largest pond is an overflow pond, actually, that comes from the smaller pond up above where the cursor is, and it supplies our farm as well as the post properties to the north, which we have met with post, and we share actually a pump and electrical supply. So that those, that water actually has been in use. And it comes from Lake Lucerne, and we have water rights to it. It's about, this last year, about eighteen eighteen acre feet. The ponds have a total of past about twenty acre feet. So it's it's not going to be that that, and the house would actually not be drawing water from those ponds or Lake Lucerne. The house would be drawing water, domestic water from the wells that were drilled by Markey, Markey Farms, who we've been working with the past few years. And that was, I think, intended to just, you know, be a safe valve for them in case they needed more water. We have done some preliminary tests on that well, and it shows that actually it's good water quality, seven point five gallons per minute. And, you know, all the kind of chemicals are within the chemical composition within the state of California water quality limits, with exception of the manganese, which, you know, is is pretty prevalent of the farms farm water in the area.
Miss Ketchum, any additional questions on that?
I guess I just thought that there must have been some motivation for digging the ag well that perhaps that there wasn't enough water from these ponds and so I don't, I'm not really here on that.
Yeah, Peter, Peter hadn't used ag well, even though he knew that when he drilled the wall, he was able to find water. I think he maybe was more curious about it than anything, because other people have driven driven wells in the area with kind of sketchy results. So right now, he's never had to use that well. It's been capped for many years, I think, since two thousand and fifteen or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Hanson?
There we go. First, a comment, just to let Canola know that I had problems reading this file when I was using my laptop. For some reason, all the drawings came in. And I use an Apple. Came in on like a half a picture. So I swept, swept, switched over to my iPad, which downloaded all the drawings, but it kept crashing my iPad. So between the two, I pieced it all together, but for some reason, it was a technical difficulty for me.
Yeah, we apologize about that. Normally, we would upload it to the to our servers, so you can just view it on a browser, but unfortunately, we weren't able to do that this game. And it is a very large file, so it might have not been able to handle that.
Yeah. Again, it was very good write-up. Just thinking back, I forgot to look up for one thing. This area was is near the site of the Portola Expedition in seventeen sixties. Is there an archaeological clause in the conditions of approval?
There are. We have, as part of the the SEQA document that we prepared, there are archaeological mitigation measures that have been included in the in the attachment.
Excellent. Yeah. Yeah, they were there. We just don't know the exact location where there is. Not that I would choose that as a military person, as Portola was, but that, no, I like the write-up. And thank you for the good work. No further question.
All right. Mr. Serrano Quan, any questions?
No questions on my end.
All right. Yeah, I don't have any questions either. What I had that has been already addressed. So for that, then we can now open for public comment.
Now opening public comment for item number five. I do not see any hands raised for this item, Chair, and I did not receive any written correspondence.
All right, thanks. Seeing that there are no members of the public that want to participate on this item, I now close public participation for the item unless there's an objection. With that, I think we can deliberate now or make our comments. Mrs. Ketchum?
Oh, thanks. I'm ready to approve.
All right, Mr. Hanson?
I'm ready to approve.
Mr. Serrano Quan?
Same here.
Okay, same for me. So is there a motion?
I'll do it. Oh, go ahead.
Also move that the planning commission adopt a mitigated negative declaration and approve the coastal development permit, planned agricultural district permit, the agricultural review permit, and the grading permit for county file number PLN two thousand and twenty-one twenty-two by adopting the required findings and conditions of approval listed in attachment A.
Second.
All right. So now we have a motion and a second. Janet, please do a roll call.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Aye.
Commissioners Serrano Quan?
Aye.
Chair Ramirez?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
All right, the motion carries unanimously. The 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 project is now approved. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, commissioners.
You're welcome. All right, we can move now to our item number six. Janet, could you read this for the record?
Item number six, owner Eric and Rebecca Tobman, applicant Bolas Construction, file number PLN two zero two two dash zero 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 one zero. Location four fifty Lancaster Boulevard in Moss Beach. And our planner this morning is Glengia.
Hi, I hope everyone can see my screen. So good morning, planning commissioners and members of public. My name is Glengia, partnered with the Department of the Department of Planning and Beauty. The item before the planning commission is item six, which is a coastal development permit and desire review permit application proposed by Ms. Renee Maldovan with Bolas Construction. This project proposes to build a four hundred eighteen square feet, single-story addition to existing one thousand nine hundred seventy-eight square feet, single-family residence on a legal five thousand four hundred eighty-eight square feet parcel in the Moss Beach area of the Aon Incorporated Sematary County. The project involves no tree removal and only minor grading. The project is also applicable to the California Coastal Commission. The subject parcel is located in an urbanized, single-family residential neighborhood. The parcel is sold for one family residential. The parcel size is five thousand four hundred eighty-eight square feet. The parcel is surrounded by other single-family residences in the area. On the left side of the slide, the, you can see that the project proposes to construct a four hundred eighteen square feet addition to the front portion of the existing. uh, to the front portion of the existing single-family residence. The rendering on the right-hand side, the rendering on right, right-hand side illustrate the design of the residence. As discussing the staff report, the design was want to be in compliance with the applicable, uh, design review guidelines by the, uh, coast side design review company. As discussing the staff report, pay staff has reviewed the application, conclude that this project proposal is in compliance with the general plan, zoning regulations, local coastal program policies, public access policies of chapter three of the Coastal Act of nineteen seventy-six, Happen Bay Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan and, um, the design review guidelines and standards. As to environmental review, this project is exempt from environmental review pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act, also known as CEQA, guideline section one five three zero one, class one E, relating to, relating to the construction of addition to existing structures up to fifty percent of whole area. The project involves a four hundred eighteen, uh, square feet, approximately, um, twenty-one percent of the existing full area addition to the existing single-family residence. For this reason, uh, staff conquers that the project is exempt from CEQA. Um, so staff, uh, recommends that the planning commission approve, uh, the coastal development permit and desire review permit, county file number PLN twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 one zero by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval identifying attachment aid of the staff report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Jia for uh, for the good, uh, presentation. Is there, uh, any questions from Commissioners, uh, Ms. Ketchum?
No, thanks.
Mrs. Mr. Hanson, no questions? Mrs. Serenoquan?
None for me.
All right, none for me either, all right, so we can open for public comment.
Public comment is not open for item number six. If your hand is raised, your name will be called. Uh, I do not see any hands raised for this item chair, and I did not receive any written correspondence.
Right, thank you very much. Uh, seeing that there are no, uh, members of the public that want to participate on the item, uh, we, I'm going to now close, uh, public comment unless there's some objection. And, uh, so now we can move to, uh, our deliberation and comments. Uh, Commissioners Ketchum?
I'm ready to approve.
Commissioner Hanson?
I'm, I'm ready to prove too.
Uh, Commissioners Serenoquan?
Same with me.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't have any, anything to add to that, so, uh, yeah, um, one of you want to, um, do the, uh, um, I'm sorry. Uh, move, move for motion, please.
Um, I moved to approve the coastal development permit and desire review permit, county file number PLN twenty twenty-two zero 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 ten by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval identified in attachment A of the staff report.
All second.
All right, so we have the motion and the second, Janet, could you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Hanson?
Hi.
Commissioner Ketchum?
I.
Commissioners Serenoquan?
I.
Cheryl Ramirez?
I.
Thank you, motion passes.
Uh, all right, so the motion carries unanimously and the project is now approved, uh, congratulations. Um, all right, so we can move on to our item number seven. Um, Mr. Monowitz, uh, correspondents and other matters.
Yes, uh, good morning Commissioners, and thank you for running such an efficient meeting. Um, we, uh, don't have any correspondence from the, uh, public to report, but I just want to make sure you all receive the, um, calendar for upcoming meetings in twenty twenty-three and be happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
Um, yeah, uh, let's see, uh, are there any, uh, questions from Commissioners? So I'll start with the Commissioner Ketchum for.
No, looks good.
Commissioner Hanson?
Um, no questions.
Yeah.
Did I miss something? Um, the, uh, um, Princeton project? I don't have the agenda in front of me.
Oh, there, there was, um, uh, item, uh, in Princeton on the consented, uh, calendar today.
Thank you.
No problem, no problem.
So that, yeah, the question is on the calendar, uh, Mr. Hanson, or any?
No, no.
Uh, Mr. Serenoquan?
The only question I have is the plan to get back into, uh, in-person meetings and potential hybrid meetings, because I know other jurisdictions have been, uh, struggling with, you know, uh, having meetings because of the ongoing health risks and, and stuff like that. Any, any discussion internally around staff, uh, regarding that issue?
Yes, um, in fact, um, the, um, emergency order that has enabled us to continue to conduct remote meetings, um, will expire in February twenty twenty-three, and as a result, all Brown Act decision-making bodies such as this commission, um, will be returning to in-person meetings as of March first. Um, we, there's nothing, um, prohibiting us from making that transition sooner, so, um, I, I, I've, uh, certainly open to the Commissioners' feedback on that, but at this point, um, we are definitely planning on conducting the March meeting, um, in person, the first meeting in March. Um, now, with regard to hybrid meetings, um, you, you only need to provide that, um, opportunity to participate remotely if the Commissioners will be participating remotely and given the administrative challenges of allowing, um, enabling that to happen, um, my understanding is that all the county Brown Act bodies will just be meeting in person and basically going back to public hearings as they used to be conducted without a hybrid component to that. Uh, um, so that, that's my current understanding of the state of affairs. I don't know if Mr. Fox would want to elaborate any further.
Um, I think you've got it right, um, I can, uh, answer any questions people may have about, um, what it looks like going forward. But Steve is correct that, uh, essentially the underlying state law that requires government agencies to hold their meetings in public, um, will essentially go back to a version that predated COVID on the expiration of the emergency declaration. Um, case counts are rising in California at the moment, and no one knows what the winter season will look like. Um, there is a remote chance, uh, a possibility that the emergency declaration will be extended. And if that's the case, um, we'll have a decision to make about whether to continue, uh, under this model. But we don't, we don't really have a lot of local authority and control over, um, how these meetings are conducted. That is mostly dictated by state law.
All right, yeah, I, I think, uh, did, did we discuss, I think we did, I'm sorry, uh, as far as, um, the public, public being able to continue to, uh, participate remotely, is that? Any, anybody know about that?
Um, I, I don't think we have discussed that, um, I can appreciate the interest in allowing that to happen. Um, I think it poses an administrative challenge in terms of having the technology and, um, you know, administering it in a way that's going to work effectively. I think, you know, from the boards of supervisors' experience running hybrid meetings, it's demonstrated that, uh, quite a bit of re- IT resources need to go into that. Um, beyond just, um, I, we, I think we've certainly been lucky to have Dana, Dennis and Angela here to host our Zoom meetings. But, um, to go beyond that and to manage a hybrid meeting, I think poses challenges that at this point we're not ready to take on.
All right, um, all right, okay, I, I, anybody else have any, anything to add? Otherwise, uh, we can move on to our next item. Um, consideration of a study session for next meeting.
Um, yes, uh, in fact, it's, uh, uh, we intend to hold a scoping session for the Cypress Point EIR. So, um, Commissioners might recall the Cypress Point Affordable Housing Project, um, which the commission previously approved a local coastal program amendment to allow to proceed to the permitting stage. Uh, a permit application's been submitted and we've initiated the environmental review that needs to accompany that permit review. And, so, um, we've determined that an environmental impact report will need to be prepared. And as part of that process, um, we provide an opportunity for interested parties to comment on what they think are important issues to evaluate in the environmental review. So, uh, we intend to put that scoping session on the next, uh, planning commission meeting agenda, which is December thirteenth, and at this point, uh, that's the only item, I'm sorry, December fourteenth. Um, and at this point, that's the only item we have on the agenda.
All right. Um, great, uh, the retrospect report?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of things coming to the board of supervisors on, uh, next Tuesday, December sixth. Uh, we'll be presenting the housing element update. Um, this commission already reviewed, uh, prior draft. If that draft has been updated in response to comments that we received and, um, feedback from, uh, the state that's been given to other jurisdictions, which had, we've taken into account in terms of, uh, drafting our submittal. Um, so the process there is, uh, if the board authorizes its submittal, we'll go to the state and we would anticipate the state would make some changes, um, that would need to come back to the county. So I'll keep you posted on the feedback we get from the board and the state on that. Um, and then on December thirteenth, we've got two items going to the board of supervisors. Um, the first is the building code update. So this is our standard three-year cycle where the state updates the building code. And, um, so we'll be adopting those, um, updates by the state and also renewing some of our, what we call our reach codes. These are, um, provisions that go beyond what's required by the state to reduce emissions. Um, and they include, um, increasing the amount of electrical vehicle charging required in new multifamily residential development and other commercial development. So trying to, uh, keep pace with the demand for charging stations. And so that's, uh, one of the areas in which we'll be recommending the adoption of reach codes. Um, the other item going to the board is the mid-coast park and recreation, uh, mitigation fee report. So, um, we're required to provide report, annual reports on the status of the fees collected and how they've been used. And there's been interest from the community to review that, so, um, we will be presenting that to the board on December thirteenth. Um, also on December thirteenth, there'll be a celebration after the board meeting in honor of supervisors, Forsley and Supervisor Groom, who are, uh, termed out and have, um, served the county very well. And so I look forward to that, uh, celebration, uh, which you guys are welcome to attend if you'd like. Um, and then, yeah, the only other item I had in my report was in-person meetings beginning in March. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions the Commissioners might have about that or anything else.
Um, yeah, I, I don't have any questions on that, but, um, anyway, uh, Commissioners, Commissioners' updates and, uh, questions, um, Ms. Ketchum?
Thanks, uh, so do we have a long-range planning manager yet?
Oh, thank you for that question, Commissioner Ketchum. I should have had that on my list. Yes, we do. Um, I'm very excited to announce that, uh, our new planning manager, Barack Singh, will be, um, starting with the county on December fifth. So he, he was, uh, up last week to just meet with the team and, uh, we went out for lunch and talked about some of the priorities he'd face coming in. And, um, he is coming to us from Santa Clara County where he has been directing their housing element update process. So he's got, got many years in the private sector, working as a consultant with many jurisdictions with, I think, which I think has given him, uh, great depth of experience and, um, yeah, I feel very lucky to have him joining our team and look forward to introducing him to you all.
Is there going to be a press release or something online to write up about him or anything? Or could you just tell me how to spell his name?
Yeah, sure, uh, it's B H A R A T, and his, uh, last name is S I N G H. And, um, yeah, I'd be happy to forward you the CV that, um, accompanied his application if you're interested.
Oh, yeah, thanks.
Sure.
Uh, and so with that, then, um, is there, do you have any idea of timeline for Plan Princeton?
Um, you know, I, I want to sit down with that and, uh, with the new manager and the team, um, I, it's definitely on the top of the priority list, um, and so I, I think we'll be seeing action on that in the, um, beginning of the calendar year twenty twenty-three. But, um, before I make any, uh, commitments to particular dates, I'd like to review our approach with the, the new manager.
Okay, I have a, I have an update on two mid-coast businesses under the same ownership that had CDPs approved in twenty twenty-one. Uh, the Harbor Village RV Park is, is new construction of a forty-three space RV park and laundry restroom. The CDP was approved in August twenty twenty-one, about, and about fifteen months later, this month, a building permit was issued. The other business under the same ownership, the Moss Beach Chevron, CDP was to address a violation at the existing gas station that occurred ten years ago when the landscape buffer, which helped to channel traffic entering the highway, was removed and paved over without permits. So the planning commission approved the CDP in February twenty twenty-one, almost two years ago, to replace the Landscape Island and add right turn only signs exiting the gas station. The building permit has not yet been issued. So what can we done, what can be done to get this longstanding violation addressed and reduce the traffic hazard created by it?
Um, well, I'll certainly look into that, uh, Commissioner Ketchum. Um, I know that, yeah, the RV park building permit process has, um, been going on and has taken some time. I, I'm not familiar with the status of the Chevron Station Building Permit off the top of my head, but I will, um, look into that and be happy to follow up with you on, um, kind of where things are at and what we can do to make sure that's moving forward.
Thank you, I, I appreciate your involvement when the CDP stage was, you know, because of this connection and the lack of motivation for one to move forward on the part of the applicant. And, uh, sort of now here we are, there, we don't seem to have any more. Uh, I don't know, anyway, I, I look forward to your future comments.
Yeah, I, I think, um, look, until the, um, violation is corrected, we always have enforcement ability to go back to the applicant and compel, uh, whatever further actions needed to get this done. So I'll, uh, work with staff to figure out where we are with that and make sure things are moving forward.
Thank you.
Sure.
That's it for me.
Yeah, and I, I just want to say, Ms. Yeah, and I just want to say, Ms. Ketchum, thank you for keeping us, you know, informed on some of these things because, you know, since we're not, at least I'm not in that part of the area. And you forget about some of these things that we have approved over the years. And and you just forget and you don't know where things stand. So for letting us know where, you know, where things to stand and and try to move things forward. All right, Mr. Hanson, any, any updates or questions? None, Mr. Sereno Quan? Mr. Sereno Quan, you have any questions or updates?
No.
All right. I don't have any either. So with that, I think we can go watch the soccer matches that are coming up. All right, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
The next and our last meeting of the year, next one. All right, thank you.
See you then.
Bye.
Bye bye.